Hello.
Good afternoon.
You want me to sit or stand?
Oh, no, you sit, it's more comfortable for 45 minutes. So as we get started, I'll just go across here and we can all introduce ourselves to you. Councilmember Feraldi.
Chris Feraldi, and I represent Ward 4.
I'm still in Ward 2.
Hi, Dr. Day, I'm Bo Wright at large.
Mary Jane Dolan, Ward 1.
Jeff Helgeson, Ward 3.
Dr. Trenae Tweedy at large.
Randy Nelson at large.
Okay, good, thank you.
We're going to have some questions for you, and we're just going to go around, and we're going to start to my left with council member Nelson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I certainly want to thank you for your initiative to apply and for being here today to share your thoughts with us as we have a few questions.
Of course.
For many years, the Lynchburg City School Board has repeatedly approved the LCS administration's proposals in the way of their budgets, their policies, without materially questioning those budgets and those policies. And it has apparently, in recent years, resulted in some ineffective outcomes, a chronic exodus of teachers, skilled administrators, and personnel from our school division. It's resulted in some extensive declines in student population enrollment, some material disconnects between LCS teachers, their students, and their students' families, and has inflated LCS budgets and created some financial difficulties. If you were a member of the LCS School Board, what would you do to hold this LCS administration professionally accountable to ensure that LCS might again deliver the promises and policies ingrained in its mission statement, every child by name and by need to graduation?
Well, that requires a very detailed understanding of all the specific issues that you just addressed. For instance, school personnel departing because of financial issues is, I think, something that hopefully you could get some feedback from those teachers who are departing. I think there is some kind of a mechanism, an exit interview system of some sort that's in place or intended to be in place. So I would think that talking to people who are leaving or who seem to be the ones suffering from the kinds of problems that you described, talking to them and finding out from their perspective what the issues were is important. I think that maybe if what you're saying is true, that the School Board maybe hasn't given the budget the attention it needs to recognize where there might be discrepancies in the funding, between the budgeted funding and the needs of specific aspects of the program, then certainly those things need to be looked at in detail, but that takes a lot of effort and a lot of time. And that's, I would say, one of the daunting aspects of contemplating myself being on the board, because I know that it would mean a lot of time looking at those kinds of things. I have not been through the budget line by line. I skimmed through it very quickly yesterday, and if I recall correctly, the total School Board budget is on the order of $100 million, if I'm right. And about half of that goes to classroom instruction. So all the specific things that you mentioned would need to be looked at one by one and see exactly how are the financial, are the dollar amounts contributing to those problems. Without having been through it line by line and talking to the individuals involved, I don't know that I could give you a more specific answer than that.
Okay, thank you for that. Can you relay to us what qualifications you think you have to accomplish what needs to be done in order to undertake that responsibility?
Well, in my role as a faculty member at Virginia Tech, there were a couple of situations in which I needed to talk to lots of individuals who were going to be affected by changes that we were contemplating. These were not financial decisions, but I think I mentioned to you all when I introduced myself to the council a few weeks back that we did undertake a large-scale, well, complete redesign and implementation of the calculus sequence at Virginia Tech, and I was the one who coordinated that. That involved talking to students, to my colleagues in the math department, soliciting their ideas about what we should do, talking to faculty in other departments, particularly the engineering department, because what we did in the math department had a big implication on their students. I also spent some time talking to the people in the community college system in the state. I went to one of their math department coordination conferences and talked to them, to tell them what we were planning and to find out from them how it might implement or impact their programs. So while dollar amounts weren't the issue, I feel like I was reasonably successful at talking to lots of the people who would be impacted by what we were thinking about, and we certainly adjusted what we were doing to accommodate the concerns. Sometimes they're conflicting concerns, you know? This group of people wants to do things one way, this group is saying, yeah, but if you do that, we're going to have this problem, and then you have to find a compromise solution. So I feel like I've been in that situation a couple times. I was, for a number of years, the graduate program director, and in that role, we did have to assign stipends to our graduate students on the order of 60 to 80 graduate students, and we had to set their stipend levels based on academic performance. Usually, they were all reviewed by the graduate committee. But I don't recall struggling to reach a particular bottom line. I think it was just a relatively small component of the math department budget so that it wasn't perhaps the struggle to work with limited resources as the school budget might be. So those are the two things I can think of specifically to respond to your question.
Thank you, Dr. Day.
Sure.
Thank you very much for your application. In reading your application, you have worked with students in the public schools and adult education, I believe.
Yes.
Can you give us a little more explanation of that?
So, well, probably the most pertinent thing is after I retired and my wife and I moved to Lynchburg, we volunteered in a general education degree exam preparation program that was organized by the Ramp Church, which at that point was right across Memorial Avenue from E.C. Glass. So my wife and I both volunteered there for about three years, working. Now, these were adults who had not finished their high school degrees. Virtually all of them were now raising children and trying to hold down a job at the same time, and we were trying to help them boost, enhance their skills with what I would describe as middle-school-level mathematics. So that's, you know, we don't usually see that at the university level. But these were people who wanted to improve their status in life. One of the students was someone who very much wanted to be a nurse, and she needed to get into nursing school and needed a high school diploma or equivalent to do that. And so that was her motive for being there. So the challenges of that were not so much the academic part, the mathematics material. The challenges were the living situations that the various students had. You know, these were people who worked all day, they had to come home, feed their children, then come to the classes and tutoring sessions that we were conducting, and those issues were the biggest obstacle, I would say, to them. Most of them were very eager and committed, but they struggled to find the time that they needed to devote to absorbing the new material. So the two takeaways I took from that were that, one, boy, it makes it a whole lot easier if you can finish your high school degree. Doing it when you're 40 years old and you have kids to take care of, boy, that is hard. And these people really exhibited that. And secondly, that lifestyle situations, those circumstances have a huge impact. Hopefully, school-aged children, if they're in a relatively stable home, those things shouldn't be quite as critical as if you're raising children and trying to earn an income and feed them at the same time. But I know that they're still an issue. You know, I grew up with two parents who were both college-educated and were successful as adults, so it was schooling and higher education was very natural to me because of the situation I grew up in. But I realize that many students don't grow up in that situation. They may be the first in their family to even finish high school, much less go to college. So they're facing a very different challenge that I didn't have to face because they're engaging in something that they maybe don't have the family background to back them up and help them through. As far as my personal involvement in, say, elementary-level education, I can't really point at anything specific. It's mostly through that general education degree preparation program that I encountered students struggling with that material.
And if I could just follow up with that, as a School Board member, seeing and understanding the importance of what's needed prior to graduating and how to get them there, what would you see as a major role in playing to help that group of students who may not take it as seriously or need to get across the finish line earlier?
Yes, it's an obvious question and a very pertinent one, but I think, again, I would have to, I would have to inform myself better about what those students are struggling with, and that probably would mean talking with some of the teachers who deal with them on a day-to-day basis and know, you know, these folks here are struggling to get their homework turned in, and I need to know more. I don't think it's, it's rarely as simple as we need this specific program, we need to say these words in the classroom, we need to work with this textbook rather than that textbook. The success stories that I know about are ones where there was a dedicated individual, whether it was a teacher, whether it was a family member or some other adult that had some mentoring role with the student, that really took an interest in them and encouraged them that they could overcome the obstacles that they felt they were struggling with. But I don't know how you implement that via a program other than provide an opportunity. So that's a difficult issue to address just via a program that you institute at a board meeting and assign someone to go execute it. It's not easy.
Thank you.
Well, good afternoon, and thank you. I appreciate reading over your, all your credentials and your curriculum, and appreciate you coming forward today.
You know, part of our, when we look at, you mentioned about helping some of the folks that are adults going back to get their education and why it's so critical for them to do it at the time. Sadly, we have, we have one school that has a 9% SOL passing in mathematics. Having somebody with your experience, I think, is good. Obviously, you're not, you mentioned it's not the textbook, it's not this, it's the actual doing and encouragement.
It's a people issue, yeah.
It's the people. And, but it also needs that encouragement and, I guess, overachieving goals that say, hey, we really are struggling in math and science in Lynchburg, and especially mathematics. So what do you see, I think you addressed it quite eloquently with regarding the, it's not the textbook, it's not the better calculator, whatnot, what can we do to improve math?
Well, one thought that I've had, and I'm not sure, I'm not sure how successful it would be, is I wonder if bringing successful people into the schools to talk, people who, from the community, who have had a successful professional career, and talk to the students and point out to them, you know, I was where you are, and I was struggling with that too, but so-and-so helped me through. I finished high school, I went and this, you know, to college, to a professional training of some kind, and I've put my life together. I can think of one individual who, I didn't meet him through the Ramp Church, he works at my bank, but he's from the black community, is a very successful banker, bank manager. He helped my wife and I through a, well, I guess, a crisis. Our identities were stolen, and someone was trying to drain our bank accounts, and he walked us through that. So he, I have a tremendous amount of respect for him. And yet, here's someone who, if you go into a school where there's a large minority population, if I went in and talked to them, they would say, well, he's just some white guy. Of course, of course, life's different for him. But if somebody that they can see from their own community who's been successful and can come in and say, yeah, I know it's tough, but it was tough for me too, but I persevered, and look what I've been able to accomplish in my life, you can do that too. And if we could have maybe a cadre of people like that, that could, the students who are struggling could identify with as sort of role models, maybe even follow up with some encouragement, you know? They check with them on the phone or something, how'd it go this week in your math class? You know, do you need someone to help you with something? Can we, I'm sort of brainstorming here. There would be a lot of details to put together, and we'd need to find the right set of individuals to do that. But that seems to me like something that could be an encouragement to the students. I guess that's kind of, I think, where we have to focus, is getting the students to want to do this. If you're being pushed through it by school policies or administrators or whoever it might be, I don't think that's as successful. I think a student needs to be committed to it themselves. So if we can help them to see the benefits of that commitment, then maybe that would help.
Thank you.
I think it sounds like we need a high-touch educational system that would work for everyone. I like that. So what, what would be your kind of overall vision for the next five to 10 years for the Lynchburg City School System?
Well, I think the issues that have been raised and the questions so far about the performance of students in the schools is a critical one, and I don't, as I said, I don't think there's easy answers, but I think the School Board needs to do everything it can to find what it can do to contribute, even if it's raising for the particular school that you mentioned, the SOL passage rate. If it's from 9% to 20%, well, that's those many students who are going to have a better time in the rest of their life because of that. So we may not be up to the level that we would target as our goal, but any improvement is good. So I would, I think focusing on the, that kind of student success, maybe for the students that are prone to drop out early, if the school programs can have something that's appealing to them, to keep them in, something that they see that is going to be valuable to them as they go forward, whether it's, you know, I've often, one of the things I noticed with the GED students is they weren't very well-informed about simple financial issues, compound interest, things like that. Well, what if we, and there may be something like this already in the schools, and I'm not aware, but what about some kind of program that taught them how to use a spreadsheet and calculate? You know, gee, the bank's offering me this mortgage at this percentage over this many years. How does that compare to borrowing the money from my uncle who says he'll give it to me for this, this much? Can they make a financial comparison like that? So something that would address what they see as their life goals. If there was something like that in the school, maybe that would help them stick around to graduation. So that's just another ill-formed thought off the top of my head that it's something that we could do. I also know that, and I suppose this is a perpetual problem for school districts, but facilities issues. I know that enrollments are dropping, not just in Lynchburg, it's statewide. I think I saw some numbers on the State Department of Education website that said school enrollments are declining, and of course, you can't have, be paying to maintain facilities for 10,000 students if you've only got seven. So those are hard issues too. So, and those are financial issues that, you know, affect what funds are available to do other things. But once you start talking about closing a school, of course, parents are very upset about that. So, and that's understandable too. So none of these issues are easy, there's no simple answer. But I think the two that I've mentioned, improving the performance, helping keep students in school who might be inclined to quit early, and trying to make the wisest decisions we can about the financial resources and the physical facilities that the school district has to work with.
Thank you, you've answered four of my questions in one answer. I appreciate it, anyway. Thanks, Mayor.
Just out of curiosity, Dr. Day, what brought you to Lynchburg? Why did you decide to make your home here?
Well, okay, when I, when my, when I retired in 2016, I don't know how familiar you are with Blacksburg, but there's a big new shopping center there, First and Main. That's it, that was our backyard, and we were not happy with, suddenly there was an IMAX theater in our backyard with people coming and going all night long. And so we, we had been looking for a way to at least to relocate. And my oldest daughter and grandchildren live in Farmville, we wanted to be closer to them. So from here, we can get there in an hour and back an hour later in the day, but that's a little bit harder to do from Blacksburg. So we wanted to be closer to family. We felt more comfortable about the community in Lynchburg. Just life here is a little more relaxed than it was in Blacksburg. Blacksburg wants to be cutting-edge everything, and when you're 70 years old, maybe you're not so interested in the cutting edge all the time anymore. So we just felt we'd be more comfortable here, and we're happy we moved, we're very, we're very happy here.
Good, well, I'm glad to hear it, and thanks for making Lynchburg your home. Can you tell me, so you've mentioned facilities and academic performance, which I grant are probably the two top issues for Lynchburg City Schools. Are there any other issues, or if you just want to choose just one, that's fine, that give you significant pause or concern about the way Lynchburg City Schools are currently operating?
Short answer is no. I mean, I don't, I'm not offering myself to serve because I have a particular issue that here's a, here's a problem, and boy, I'm going to fix it, you know? I, I don't see any glaring issues. Now, as I look at School Boards around the country, some of them seem to be in flames right now, and I guess I would hope that we could avoid that here. I think those controversies, like in Loudoun County and other places, you know, I understand the positions of people on both sides of that, but I don't think the controversy is serving the students well. And so my hope would be that we could avoid any of those extremely divisive conflicts that have erupted in other places. I'd like the School Board to stay focused on the education of the students and serving them as best we can.
Thank you.
Thank you again for coming in, we really appreciate it.
Sure.
My question is, could you articulate your understanding of the role of a School Board member, considering there's so many, so much information that's really discredited the school system, and also talk about the negative aspects of it? But what is your role as a School Board member?
Well, certainly, there's an administrative role in participating in the discussion of the various policy issues, budget issues, that need to be decided in a formal way. But that, as I think I've already alluded to, that involves understanding those issues. So one of the things that I would hope to be able to do is talk to the people who are going to be affected by the issues that are on the table for the Board, whether that's teachers, whether that's parents, whether that's a meeting with groups of people outside of the official School Board meeting setup. I know this afternoon, there is one of these community conversations going on about facilities issues, and I'm going to participate in that on Zoom, just to listen. I'm in learning mode here, in case you do decide to appoint me. I'd just like to know, what are the, what are people thinking? You know, what, what matters to those, to the folks that take the initiative to show up for that? So I think that's the role of a School Board member, anybody in an administrative position, to understand the people who are affected by the decisions you make. So I would hope that I can be effective at talking to people and that they would feel free to talk to me about the things that they think are going well and the things that they're upset about too. Because School Board members are the ones who are in the place to make the policy decisions that hopefully can alleviate problems where they exist. So there's, you know, doing the job, the administrative job, thinking about the budget and the various things that the School Board does. I know the School Boards often play a role in honoring students who have won awards or been selected as best student in such and such a category, and I think that that's probably an important role for the Board and the community, that the community knows the Board members are paying attention, that Board member cares about the success of their students, and that an exceptional student gets recognized and gets rewarded and gets a pat on the back from people that they never see except when they're told they need to go to the School Board to get their award. But still, knowing that the, quote, "authorities" have recognized their performance. So I think the School Board has a role to play in that as well, to encourage those teachers and students alike who do an exceptional job.
Thank you.
I am not a math person.
That's okay.
I was very pleased to be finished my junior year at high school, but I commend you for your-
I have my weaknesses too.
I commend you for your commitment to that field. It is one of the four core areas of academics that I'm looking for in a School Board candidate to say, this is the foundation of the disciplines. And ultimately, that's what I'm looking for in an appointee. So to the language of the question, how would you be an advocate for putting strong emphasis for the core disciplines of academics, which in my view would be mathematics, history, science, and English? And then how also would you strive for accountability to achieve suitable or superior success rates in those fields?
Well, again, I think communication with the teachers is important, and I think I've said this in a couple contexts already, in this case and regarding the math teachers, I would like to hear from them what they think is working and what's not working. Is the curriculum, the materials that they are using, are they effective for their students? Or are they finding that they need to supplement them with other things that the textbooks that have been selected are deficient in? So those things are relatively easy if we can get feedback from the teachers about the effectiveness of the materials. I guess I would like the teachers to know that they have an advocate for improving the situation on the Board. I'm just thinking particularly about mathematics teachers because obviously that's my background. If, and I assume that the school district has some resource people that help make curriculum decisions, textbook purchase decisions, I would like to get to know those people and talk with them about how they see it from their perspective. and talk with them about how they see it from their perspective. I I I don't think I would be in a position to just waltz into a position on the school board and start telling them, oh, I know the perfect book. You guys are doing the wrong thing. You need to be using this. That's that's foolish. I would need to hear from them. I do know that textbook publishers can be pretty aggressive. I don't know how many times I've had a publisher from a major calculus book waltz into my office in Blacksburg and start trying to tell me why we needed to be using their book and offering me all kinds of goodies to go with it. So I know that there's sometimes some pressure, sometimes some advocacy on the part of the publishers, that it can be good if they have something unique to to offer and to let you be aware of it. But maybe the most aggressive publisher representative doesn't represent the best materials for the course. So I would want to support. And if they would like me to participate in reviewing materials that they have to select amongst, I would want to support them in that way as much as possible. I'm not sure if that completely answers your question.
Too good enough to agree. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Day. My both my parents were teachers. My father was a university professor. My wife was a teacher and a Lynchburg Elementary School principal. Over the years, I have heard more and more about standardized testing and how that is very destructive to effective instruction in students thoroughly learning the subject matter. And it was mentioned, Councilmember, Peraldi mentioned the core subjects. What perspective do you have as to the proper role of standardized testing, which I understand today is entirely on computer, online testing? It's not pencil and paper or fill in the dots anymore. So students need to have some proficiency and comfort
Yes.
at the keyboard. How do you see that evolving or not evolving in the future of teaching those core subjects and embedding that level of educational appreciation?
Well, has has already been mentioned. It is playing the role of a benchmark, for better or worse. You know, how do our students perform on those tests? Aside from whether the tests are well designed or not, they still provide a benchmark, we're doing better, we're doing worse, that is uniform across the board through all the schools in the state system. I know that early on, there were consequences for schools whose students performed poorly. And I think that was destructive because that gave put a lot of pressure on teachers to make sure their students got to a certain performance level rather than really understanding material. So I'm not sure that, well, I suspect that having a consequence for the school of low performance is not so great. But I think it does help to have some way to measure, how are we doing? That's not simply the instructor's own evaluation. As an instructor, you always want your students to do great. But that means you're a little bit biased about evaluating your students compared to the students at the same grade level across the board. So I think standardized tests do have a role in that way to help assess performance. You know, people often complain about that they have to teach to the test, meaning that that those standardized tests have become all that they focus on in their teaching. And I guess my thought about that is, well, maybe those the material on those standardized tests is what should come first. And if you can get your students up to par on those, then go ahead and do something else beyond them, whatever you want. But if your students are struggling with the basics, well, then I guess you got to focus on the basics because they're not going to be able to do anything more advanced or more sophisticated if they can't get up to a sort of minimum competency level. In the math department at Blacksburg, there were a number of courses that some years ago, we introduced what you would call standardized tests. We called them common time exams, but they were exams written by committee. And every student in, say, freshman calculus, at the end of the course, they took one of these standardized tests. They were on paper, but they were multiple choice and machine graded. But in that case, every instructor had the option of deciding how much the score from that standardized portion would count towards a student's grade. Some people made it their entire final exam. Other people made it like 10%. So now, I'm not sure that's appropriate at the K through 12 level, but it is a a way that we managed that concern that some would have about making a standardized test the only criteria for evaluating a student. We gave the instructors the chance to decide how much they wanted to emphasize it. But you we could certainly see that some years, those standardized tests were were pretty well designed. Other years, they were having to throw out questions after the fact because they realized there was no right answer. Or there were more than one right choice in the multiple choice. And now so now what do we do with all the student scores? So there are certainly problems with it. They have to be very carefully designed and vetted. But I think, again, to back to what I said initially, I think they do play an important role as giving everybody a benchmark to measure, how well are we doing?
How much does the fact that Lynchburg is a first city? We have a number of students, a number of schools, particularly elementary schools, whose population is high poverty, high free and reduced lunch, to the extent that that's still measured anymore. And other schools have greater opportunities and draw from populations either by selective
Sure.
enrollment or or just simply the demographics of the neighborhood around the school. What do you have any ideas with regard to helping those schools who inherently have students from poverty and don't have the opportunities, the Wi-Fi, the computers at home, that would enable them to perform better on on those tests than schools who have other opportunities?
I'm not sure that that Wi-Fi or electronic, you know, a fancy or calculator will necessarily help. To sort of repeat what I said before, I think what they really need is some personal involvement. So maybe smaller class sizes, more time with their with their teacher or with tutors or some human resource that can be focused on the students that are struggling most. If teachers could, if, you know, if if a teacher has a class of of 20 students and they can identify here that here are the 12 who are really having a hard time. If we could have something that what can we? What can we do for those 12 students to help them that the other students don't need? Does it does it mean they have some extra tutors? Does it mean they restructure their time a little bit different? So they, you know, they I'm sure be very resistant to coming in after school for supplemental teaching, especially youngsters don't like that. But I think you have to try to target it at the students who need it most. And as I said before, you have to try to understand what is the problem? Is it at home? They don't their home situation is is difficult, and they can't focus on whatever portion of their schoolwork they should be doing at home? Is it an attitude problem? If it's a home problem, then maybe you address that one way. If it's an attitude problem, well, I you'd have to talk to a psychologist or someone more adept at that than me. But understanding the issues, I think, is important to be able to figure out what you can do.
Thank you, Dr. Day.
Thank you. My question was going to be, if you could redesign the school system, how would you do that? But you just answered it in so many words. And so I think I have a question regarding serving on the school board that role and in that seat. You talk about a lot of the high touch points that we talk about with students and probably the population of demographic of students Lynchburg City Schools has. How do you articulate that to folks who don't believe that touch point is either necessary or should be resourced for smaller class size and or even that facilities matter? Or that even understand the mentoring piece? Or that certain positions are needed when you have to make a smaller group subset to work with than for that teacher in that classroom who may be dealing with everyone? How do you articulate your experience, knowledge, especially in that core area of if students don't get the sequencing as they need to going through matriculating through school? How do you articulate that to people who who oppose that level of investment or high touch point?
I suppose in talking with those people, I might say, well, what is the most important thing for your students? What 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 do you value most? What has been successful for you students? So if that's important to you, that these other things over here that you're expressing opposition to are important for these students. If if you were their parents, what would you want for them? Would you want them to just be brushed to the side and say, well, you're we're focusing on this group, not you? I don't think any any reasonable parent would want their own students' needs to be disregarded. So I I think my answer to that is to try to help those who are skeptical to think about if if this was your child, what would you want for them? You you don't want us to give everything up for these children because you feel yours might be left out. But they likewise feel the same way. They don't want everybody, everything to go into a gifted program if if your student's struggling or has special needs or something of that type. So I think everyone involved needs to realize that there's. I think Lynchburg, more than Montgomery County, has a huge range of of students in different, what word do we use, cohorts, categories? And they all take different resources, different approach. And everyone has to realize that, that, you know, there's a lot of pieces of bread to be buttered here, and we got to spread the butter thin sometimes.
Thank you.
Since the time is quick, I'll just compliment you on, you know, the I teach corporate finance. And so you mentioned about finance and the financial calculators. That's how I get my college students to kind of get into corporate, get into time value of money. We start looking at having examples. And I so I appreciate the example that you gave earlier. People start seeing saving a little bit, investing a little bit, and then all of a sudden, it's something very different later on. It's kind of very eye opening.
Yeah.
So thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to defer to Vice Mayor.
Very good. Okay. You all moved fast. A lot faster than I anticipated. Excuse me, Dr. Day. I'm going to pull up my questions. What are your views on school choice?
I guess I'm generally in favor of that. I think a parent that is willing. Well, okay, so there's several aspects of school choice. There's private schools, homeschooling. A parent who decides to put their child in one of those, whether it's private or homeschooling, they they are expending a lot of their own financial and time resources in addition to what they're paying through their taxes, which are still going to support the public schools. So given that they're willing to do that, my inclination is that we should let them. I don't want there to be animosity between those communities and the public school system if there are things that the public schools can do to supplement or to make those those families feel that the public school is not their enemy, but maybe has a resource as a resource. I know of a family that has some children who a homeschooled family with some children that needs some assessment, professional assessment about developmental abilities. And they turn to the school looking for to access whatever professional the school would turn to to assess a child that is having some struggle. But they were told that the financial cost of that would be excessive, beyond their ability to pay. So they weren't able to pursue that. Now, I understand that the the school system has limited resources. You can't give everybody everything. But to the extent that the school can, within reason, provide some kind of support for the families that have chosen to go that route, I have no opposition to that.
Let me ask a question of something a different way. If it was to become feasible, more feasible in in Virginia for public funds, you know, what's called tuition, to follow a student to, say, a private institution?
So like through a vouchers program or something like that?
Any views on voucher programs?
My, again, I haven't thought through that carefully. Again, my initial reaction is I want to be supportive of parents, particularly parents that are invested in their child's education. My own daughter taught in the public schools for a couple of years, I think, over in Hampton Roads. And that was a low income community and encountered a lot of problems. And one of the things I recall her saying was that parental commitment was an issue. And I've heard that many times before, that if only parents cared more about how their children were doing in school. Well, the parents who would put their take a voucher somewhere else or homeschool their child or pay private school tuition, they are exhibiting a level of commitment to their student that we would like to see for all the parents of the public schools. Is there some way that we can make that contagious to to get that level of commitment into the families in the public schools? Now, that's not quite your question, I understand. I guess I'm saying I see something I admire about the parents who choose to do that, namely, the commitment to their children and the desire to spend resources beyond what they're obligated to to address their child's needs. But in the case of vouchers, I also recognize if if there's a voucher system and a a family takes their students in that voucher, the the financial resources that that voucher carries with it and moves them over here, that does pose a drain on the public schools. So I guess maybe my response would be, I don't want to I don't want to prohibit parents from doing what they see as best for their children. I would like to see their choice for what's best for their children to be perhaps the public schools. So maybe we can learn something from those parents. What are the public schools? Why are they dissatisfying to you? Why would you want to do that? Is there something we can do to the public schools that would make you choose to stay in the public system? So it's an opportunity to evaluate.
That's a that's a balanced response, and I really appreciate it. I think my question would be, what about those? And this is not really for now. This is more of a thought experiment for later, but.
What about those who can't afford to do?
Who I can't afford. And what about those people who say, there's nothing you could do? Right? I think that's just an interesting question. There might be some families who might say, I'm not particularly interested in sending my child to public schools, but I would like to.
Oh, yeah, there will certainly be people who feel that way for a number of reasons.
To be out of myself of my tax dollars. But in any event, I'm sorry, Councilman.
You got 30 seconds.
Yeah, I got 30 seconds. I think you all know what I'm asking. A few years ago, the state legislature afforded the opportunity for localities and school divisions to entertain collective bargaining agreements with their employees. For us, it would be police, fire, dispatch, trash pickup, public works and folks in City Hall and so on. School divisions were carved out individually because they truly are a separate entity entirely and have a different governing body. And so school board was given the opportunity or the authority to entertain that prospect with their staff as well. If you were to be appointed to the school board, would you support or be in opposition to collective bargaining agreement with LCS employees?
I guess I don't know. I would I would have to hear from both sides. What are are what are the concerns that might lead teachers and staff to want to be part of collective bargaining? What are the downsides? I know that, you know, we see, like Chicago Public Schools, it seems like they're constantly on strike. So there's a danger of disruption. But on the other hand, I don't want the the school employees to be unhappy with their employment circumstances. So I I'm not sure I have a clear position. But to, to, to begin collective bargaining for school staff, I guess I'm anxious about it. I'm worried that it might have negative consequences. So if the, if the concerns of the staff could be met short of that, then maybe that would be a better way to go. That, that's my initial reaction. But ultimately, it's the decision of, well, now the way you posed the question, it's not the decision of the teachers, you're saying, well, what about this, should the school board allow it, basically? It's difficult. So I'd need to think harder about that.
Sure. And just in, in respect to time, and I had asked other school board candidates a little bit more pointed questions about, if I didn't get a straight yes or no. From, from my perspective, it would be a concern of mine and hopefully an oppositional vote simply because it would rob our ability to make fiscal decisions because the school board, which is an appointed body that is not elected, but is appointed by us, has now entertained a legal contract with them.
So you're contracting out some of your authority, yes.
Right. So that, that, just, just we're all on the same page.
I understand that.
Thank you.
And thank you very much. And the question is, do you have any questions for us?
Do you know when you will make your appointment decisions?
Probably around May 20 or thereabouts.
Near the end of the-
In that.
May 20 is right, that's right now. That's next Tuesday.
Yeah, we have, we have more interviews this Friday. So after those interviews conclude, then we should be in a position to make our appointments.
At least the first meeting in June.
Exactly. Yeah, June 6th.
Okay.
Well, yeah. Right.
I can't think of any other questions I have.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for your willingness to serve on this.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Day.
Thank you.